Go ahead and call the meeting to order tonight for June the 9th, 2025. To start, we're going to have an invocation from our police chief, Brandon Liner, and we'll follow that by the pledge of allegiance. Chief Liner?
Dear heavenly father, we just want to thank you for this day, God. I thank you so much for allowing us to come together here, God, and just, God, I just want to bless all these people and pray for all these people who care so much for our city and make one, want to make this city such a better place. God, I thank you for your son that died on the cross, and God, I thank you so much for everything you've done for me, and I pray that you put a hedge of protection over everyone in this building and everyone in our communities, and in Christ, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start our public hearing on the proposed City of Easely FY 2526 operating budget at this time. Mr. Couch and Mr. Turden.
Thank you, Mayor. Last month, Ralph tried to give his briefing, and we had no slides that were working, so we're going to do that again. Can anybody hear me? All right. And so we're going to go through those slides again now that he can actually see what he's talking to. So, thank you, Ralph. Go ahead.
All right. This first slide shows a trend over a number of years, and a couple of things you will notice on that. There is a line for, it's called ARPA, down near the bottom before the, one of the codes. You do see 5 million in there twice. That's part of the $10 million in ARPA funding we got that was transferred to the general fund, and that is used, or has been used, to fund the fund balance, the fund deficit as that occurs. Also in this, the first finance property tax, and according to what we receive from the state, from revenue and fiscal affairs, we would be allowed to raise millage 18, or sorry, 16.19 percent, 16.19 mills. And they also indicated that over the past five years, we've had a population increase of over 20 percent. Both those impact what we see as a need for a growing budget.
Good.
There are building code enforcement changes. We had many fees that we changed. Building codes have some new ones, and I'll say, as a city, we've been more actively enforcing the building codes. So, some of these has come up as things have happened in the city. Parks and rec also have some fees increases. They're all listed out here. Business licenses, we looked around at other municipalities, and we're bringing up those more in line with what other municipalities charge. And this is more detailed on the property tax. So you can see, we are doing a proposed increase of three mills from 72.5 to 75.5. And then we break it down for what it would be on a $200,000 house. So that would be a $24 increase. There's also a comparison to other municipalities around us, and you can see we're on the lower end of that. This is a little more detail on the services that are included, and there are a bunch of those services included, and if you look at the detail on that. And, you know, sometimes you may not think about these services, and then you need them when you trip them fall and dial 911 and get that quick police response, that quick fire response, and you also get the garbage picked up pretty regularly every week. So you can see these slides online after the meeting if you want to read more about the details. Some general notes about the increases on salaries. There is a 4% COLA. There are contributions that the city makes for retirement plans that are state retirement plans. And also, we're adding 14 new positions. So that includes those you see listed there, six firefighters, four police officers, events coordinator, and rec, also maintenance tech, a city planner, and a building inspector, and some of those are partially year salaries because we're not hiring them immediately July 1st. General fund expenditures, this kind of breaks it down for you where the money is as far as general departments. So from this, you can see that police and fire are the largest departments. Public works is pretty close to fire, and then parks and rec is also in there. A lot of parks and rec funding is not from the general fund, it's from hospitality tax. So that's where a large chunk of that comes from also. Capital expenditures, we do have many, and there are also some that we did not feel like we would be able to fund. You can see right there, six vehicles for the police department. They run those things so much, it's always a process to have to replace them. Public works, you see a utility truck and also a garbage truck. We did have one recently break down, and we're trying to have a backup truck. That's why the garbage truck overhaul is in there for 35 grand. We're an expanding and growing city, and we're adding hundreds of new homes. Fire, firefighter gear, you know, it's pretty expensive. It's per firefighter and, not 52,000, it's 6,000, well, close to 6,000 per firefighter. But it also has a time limit on it of about 10 years. So we're always going to be rotating in that equipment. You can also see we're doing some upkeep on the fire stations, so that'll account for some. And then there's things related to exhaust and getting rid of exhaust in the buildings, make sure it's moved out.
And dropping down the building in codes, as we add one person, we will also be adding a vehicle. These are impact fees, and basically, this is kind of a fund that we accumulate tax revenue in and then use it for a larger project once we've accumulated, I'll say, a chunk of funds without being really financially exacting. You can see grading for a fire station, 300 grand. Parks and rec, we are budgeting to spend 1.3 million, and that's part of another 5 million from hospitality. So we're looking to do a lot of renovation, upkeep, and expansion on parks and rec side. Police have outgrown their current training room, so we're putting one in the basement here, and that's 188,000, and also looking at that parking lot right here for 130. Hospitality fund, we did talk briefly about, but basically, it's another fund where we collect money over time and build it for bigger projects. And, you know, it's incredible, some of the tournaments and such that we have done in the city of Easely, and actually, the people that attend those, and they stop and get food and such, help pay for the upkeep through the hospitality taxes. And here are some of the capital expenditures. This is, there's two parts, basically.
We issued hospitality funds a couple of years ago, and we're spending out the remaining amount of those, and we're spending also on hospitality taxes, which have the hospitality fund.
Here we are in, okay, we just covered that.
Next slide, okay.
4.7 million in that. We also have other funds besides the general fund, and you can see the budgets on these. Stormwater gets into a lot of drainage and storm. When the storm hits, the water's got to go somewhere. Accommodations tax, we do have a victim advocates fund, also the other funds, law enforcement, fire, and tax increment fund. All of those total up to another 2.6 special revenue funds that we will be spending this year. This is a summary of our debt picture. As you can see, we do pay off some, and we're adding some more. We are spending about 2.6 on the new ladder truck, which is necessary to reach the taller buildings in the city. And we ordered that last year, October, I believe, and they told us 43 months of build time. So you have to plan well in advance to get the equipment you need. But I would just say on this, you do see how it's rotating and the years of life left on the debt. So debt comes in, obviously, for bigger projects like a $2.6 million, 100-foot platform ladder truck.
That's all, Mayor, on the budget slides.
Okay, so we can move into the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anybody that would like to speak on the budget? Just come up to the microphone.
Hi. I went to the work session, and I had a thought, and it may not be feasible, but Tom O'Shields mentioned that there was a few things downtown, pressure washing sidewalks, and picking weeds and cutting grass. We have prisoners that the police arrest, or they have to do community service. We could even tap Easely High School and Middle School and say, hey, guys, you did something wrong. Your summer's going to be doing community service for the city of Easely, picking weeds, cutting grass, washing buildings, washing police cars, whatever they need to do. Might teach some of these non-offender, the offenders that aren't violent, to think about what they did. Maybe kids, maybe the guys that ran lights or something. I don't know. I know it sounds like a silly idea, but it was a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
$10.75 million. $10.75 million. How does that sound ring to you? Just for reference, fiscal year 2223 was 26,000, 26 million, I'm sorry, 950, 140. 22, 2324 was reduced, by the way, 4.5 percent from the previous year, to 25,739, 334. Fiscal year 2425, we went back up, 27,353, 598. This sitting city council, mayor, administrator, finance director, are presenting a budget of $36 million, 103, 103,843. That's $10.75 million above last year. And another gentle reminder, wards 2 and 4 voted no on the budgets for fiscal year 2223 and 2324. No. Oh, they like to tell you, it's only $20 more on your taxes. They're right to a point. I've used this argument before. But I've done my research, because, you know, I like to research things. It's a nominal fee, increase on your personal property taxes. But, but, when you look at the taxes it takes to make up a mill, and who that affects, and then how it affects you, the taxpayer, the slope is a bit tricky. Let me address some specific talking points here. We, Easely, are the second lowest millage in the county. Ralph just said that. That point is true. However, since I'm in marketing, and one plus one must equal two, I reached out to Brent Suddeth, who is the auditor for Pickens County, to help me understand. He gave me the following value of a mill as of June 30th, 2024, which was from the tax year 2023. So everything is going to, that I'm going to list is from that same data. Easely, 1 mill equaled $126,273. Liberty, hold on to your hats, ladies and gentlemen, 12,000 measly dollars, 547. Norris, uh-uh, no, no, not for this. I don't have a limit on this. I have a limit on the next one.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yes, I do know that, too. Norris, paying attention, people, 2,003, 39. Central, 15,003, 19. Six Mile, 3,006, 22. And Pickens, 17,327. You know, I left Clemson off of here, but I can tell you that also, because it's on the next page, is 126,339. My point, and clearly you can see this, is that while we may be second to last in our millage taxation to our city, we are second, second, ladies and gentlemen, behind Clemson in our intake of dollars. And while this math may not compute exactly to the letter, I think you can see my point. Again, my math is one plus one equals two. Budgeting math is often one plus one equals whatever you need it to be. Furthermore, 130,000, 130,771 dollars was the estimated mill value for 2024, and 145,000 is the estimated mill value for 2025. So why is our budget, our proposed budget, 10.75 million dollars more when we have more people paying taxes and increasing our millage rate, which is what you brought up, Mr. O'Shields, in our meeting? Why our millage was never increased is because we kept growing and it didn't need to increase. So let's look at a tax bill, because we were talking about tax bills in the last session. Here's mine, right here. Ward 2 referenced the tax you pay for school. She has a lovely flow chart for it. Well, the school's operation tax on my bill is 110 mills, 110. If you actually look at your tax bill, you will see, if you go down here and it says "school tax credit savings," do you know how much that is? It is 100 percent of your school operations taxes. You get that back, ladies and gentlemen. There are 29 impact fees that have been raised, two new residential subdivision plat review fees, three new inspection fees, a new vendor book divet fee that I could not find in the 2425 rate schedule, but it may have been there, just to be clear, and a new code enforcement fee area that make up 10 additional fees for new categories. When you look at the ordinance from year to year, I don't understand why the hospitality and rec fund has jumped 4 million, plus the parks and rec impact fee that were not listed in 202425 budgets are now entered at 1.39 million more. Now, I'll tell you, I know that a budget is a working document, and if I were you, Chris Mann, and you budgeted for my department at 5 million dollars more, you better not take it away from me next year. You need to ask for it. If it's in this budget, you need to ask for it. If you want to say it's a one-time thing, put it in capital expenditures and move it over, be in ordinance. And Justin, this is where you need your roundabout money, capital expenditures, so it's safeguarded. Tom O'Shields asked in the last meeting, where would you cut? Well, before I would add any services, I would like to see a comprehensive report from the police and fire on the call logs from the previous three years to determine the growth needs. I would make sure that increases in salaries are aligned with COLA and step increases, that step increases do not constitute an additional COLA, or whatever you call extra, from last year's budget increases, I mean salary increases. Will every department get a minimum COLA, because the last rate was not across the board? To be clear, because the state and county cut their taxes, we need to raise ours? Okay. But if you want to, if you want to argue road improvement, you can raise our taxes that the county is decreasing and put a designated millage for roads. But you can't put that in the general budget. It's got to go for roads. You can also go to the state transportation committee and ask for the roads to be paid by the state. That works, too. Let's talk about flowers. $21,000 for real flowers versus these fake flowers you have. I mean, I didn't ask you about this, but how much do we pay for the fake flowers? You know it off the top of your head? No, there you go. If you can't take care of them, then how about we have no flowers at all downtown? Just take them off. We've had it before. We survived. Let's talk about trash pickup out of the county. I called two friends since the last meeting. They pay $42 a quarter. It's not a month. And you know what they can do? They can have chickens, and they can have goats. They can shoot their gun if they want to. They like being in the county. You can ask the county to not give you ISO, and you can take that money back, and then you can raise our taxes. Adding 14 physicians, I don't see a grant writer to potentially help alleviate the areas in, very, across all departments that could make a difference, to pay for some of this stuff. And then let's talk about insurance that we save by raising the deductibles. Have there been any recs, and how did that $5,000 deductible benefit us? It's been said that we need three months of money in the bank at all times. I think the auditor said he was looking for 19 percent of the budget in reserves. Are you going to spend all of the reserve money? And how will this go down as your legacy? You are going to eat up every piece of land and spend everything in our coffers. Show us what you're going to do with this money, not general funding all the way to the bank. Speaking of the roundabout, it was in the budget at one time, and then it went away, and now it's back, just for the vote. Be careful. Show us what you're going to do with this money. We need transparency that you campaigned on. $10.75 million residents of Easely in a budget increase. This is insanity. Thank you.
I hate tax increases. I hate them. Not saying they're not sometimes necessary, but I don't like, nobody does. We don't want to pay any, we don't want to pay the government more money. Nobody does. And I've struggled going through this budget many times, because I don't begrudge any hard working employee of the city of Easely, from the police department to public works and everything in between. I don't begrudge them a living wage. I don't. In reality, I don't mind a $50 or $60 increase in a year on my taxes. That doesn't bother me. What bothers me is I won't codify guarantees that any increase that is approved is going to go exactly where you say it's going to go. Last year's budget, we're doing this millage increase to give, give them this pay increase because, you know, their, their pay is so, is, it's not where it should be. It wasn't where it should be. Apparently, it's still not where it should be. It's been made clear to me that this is still not going to get it where it's supposed to be. So how much of a millage increase are you going to come to us asking for next year? I'm not saying it might not be a good idea. I don't know. But we got to get a handle on this and get it to where we're not going to have millage increases every year forever, because government gets used to having that money. They want to keep getting more of it every year. I mean, it's just, it's how it works. And government especially, I personally know from someone in this room who's explained to me how when they were in the Navy, they'd send them out near the end of the budget year, hey, go buy this, 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 because if we don't spend all our money, we won't get it again next year. I don't want us to fall in that trap. I don't think we're falling into that trap, but I want to make sure we don't. And it's been explained to me that we are very behind, and I believe that we are behind in salaries, especially for first responders. There's too much turnover in the fire department, the police department. It costs a lot of money to train new people. I get that. So if we're so far behind, maybe when the UDO gets here, look at the impact fees that are put in it. Maybe they need to be increased some more. Increase those impact fees. Make these developers that want to come here help pay for what we need. They want to come here so bad, we're so great, cough up the money. Concerning the roundabout, Ralph, I'm so sorry, I don't remember your last name, Mr. Ralph, I'll be respectful, mentioned that if we're going to, I want to see money for the roundabout at Kananland. I want to see it allocated so that during this fiscal year, it can't be decided that we'd rather spend that money on something else. And then when the state comes through with their side of the funding, and whatever other moving wheels need to take place, when it all comes together, and I'll think, oh, well, we spent it on something else. I want to make sure that doesn't happen. And he mentioned doing an ordinance that would, say, maybe for six months or a certain amount of time, and then reevaluate where we are with that roundabout. I want to make sure the money that we have that can be spent on it doesn't get spent elsewhere and then leave us without the piece of the pie we're supposed to have when it can happen. Not to be repetitive, but please think about how many more years of millage increases are necessary to get salaries where they should be. And like I said before, I'm not begrudging somebody a living wage. I don't begrudge somebody having the pay raise that they deserve. I don't at all. I just want to make sure that we're very cautious, very responsible, and very intentional with how we're spending all of our money. And while I agree, Justin said a work session, he doesn't think that there's any scandalous, wasteful money going on in this budget. I don't either. I don't think there's any sketchy stuff going on. But I've never in my life seen a budget that couldn't have its belt tightened. There's, there's even, oh, well, it just might be, you know, 10,000 here, or 5,000 there. 15,000 more than you had to begin with. Tighten up that belt. Find any, any little scraps that we can get will make things better. Everything helps. I appreciate y'all hearing from us.
The hospitality tax, I want to address that. I have a concern because recreation department, we're using that money for the recreation department, correct? We're increasing the fees for these kids, and most of the kids that live in traditional ward five cannot afford to play soccer, baseball, football, anything, because their average income is what? You're going to have to cough up. So what I'm saying, let's please use some of that money to provide scholarships, some type of assistance, to give those kids a democratic opportunity. Because the way it is right now, with your increase of fees, they can't afford it. Period. The other thing, I respect police officers that go to work every day to protect me. President is proposing a 13 percent increase in the military budget. Anybody who studied politics knows it's going to triple down, so if they don't get the money, let's give us our money back. Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
We ready to move on? Anybody else? Okay, we will move into our regular agenda. Item number four is approval of minutes as written. There are a couple of minutes in your packets. Are there any additions or deletions to these minutes? Okay, hearing none, those stand as written. We'll move to our award report from council members. Ward one, Councilman O'Shills.
I have nothing to say this month. Save a little time.
Okay. Word number two, Councilwoman Davidson.
I would just like to thank the staff for their due diligence and their fiscal thoughtfulness and their request and presentation of the budget. Thank you.
Okay. Word three, Srinath.
I want to respond to the gentleman that suggested the scholarship program for the recreation department. That is one excellent idea, and I'm requesting Chrisman to look into that, to see what we can do.
We do have, and we have, so, you're correct, that was a wonderful, we do have a scholarship fund. None of our athletic programs fees have increased since the fiscal year. Actually, one decreased. But we do have a scholarship fund, about a third of our athletes are on scholarship, and we do have the Joe Leslie Foundation as well that was set up when Joe passed away and graciously got set up. So, we do have individuals in the community campaigning to that. So, that was wonderful, and so, by that he brought that to everybody's attention, because I do think that's something that more people should.
Okay, thank you. The mayor campaigned on and even pledged financial accountability, transparency, and competency. This is from her campaign video of October of twenty-three, so I think you can find it on Facebook. Well, we all know how much a pledge is worth, but I cannot accept how the council was not informed about the budget process change this year. For many years past, the council had retreats to discuss the expenditures and set goals for these expenditures that we were to discuss. How is that being transparent when the council was not involved as per city policy? The city needs to be more transparent where their money is coming from. Last year, three of us were new and probably overwhelmed and wanted to do our best with this budget process, so most of us probably was prepared to have these retreats, which didn't happen. That's what we're supposed to do, it's our job, and that's why we were elected. The voters has put their faith and trust in us. Some of us are trying hard to do as we promised in our campaigns. Not too sure about the others as they go with the flow. Voters need to take notice that there's three seats up for election in November.
Word four, Councilman Jones.
I have nothing to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Word five, Councilman Alexander.
On Memorial Day, I was happy to attend the Easely Chapel for the Memorial Day service. It was a very, it was very moving. I got two emails about the Malden Cemetery, and the administrator told the works to address these very quickly, and very thankful for that. There are some positives in this draft budget, and some of the fees do need to be waived, do need to be raised, especially, you know, like remediation, where we're having to go out and cuddle on, that's not, things that shouldn't be taxpayer burden, increasing that fee. The draft budget, though, does propose a property tax hike, it's at least six years in a row. One point on the millage is that an increase in the millage, you know, on a residential property, yeah, it is going to be less. That's also going to affect commercial property, that's going to affect the price of your goods and services, that's going to affect rental prices. And so, it's not exactly as cut and dry as the, as just on a single owner occupied residential. The draft budget is also significantly larger than last year's budget, so unless there's a significant change, it's unlikely I will support the budget. We also had redistricting that went into effect in May, and so, Canon Land is actually no longer part of Ward Five. It's now in Mr. Robinson's district, but I've had some very good conversations with Mr. Robinson on the roundabout project. Even though it's no longer in my district, it's still something I am absolutely committed to, seeing, get those funds in place, get that locked down. And I also got a communication about speeding on South B, and I was happy to see, I think on Friday, there was an officer there on South B monitoring traffic. Hopefully, that's something that can continue. Thank you.
Okay. Word six, Councilman Robinson.
Mayor Talbert, one thing that has been missing from the budget discussion is an explanation of the local option sales tax and how that plays into all this. I think it would help if Mr. Couch or Mr. Herndon could give us a briefing on that at our next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. That's a good point. Okay, and then my message is just that school's out and summer is here. I'm sure you all already know that. And as we move into the summer season, I wanted to encourage everybody to take full advantage of the events and the activities happening right here in our city. Whether you're attending concerts, or you're enjoying our parks, maybe you're exploring downtown, there's something for everybody to enjoy. I also want to offer an important reminder to please drive safely. Your mayor's going to say that, because with school out, children will be playing, and residents of all ages will be walking, running, and biking much more frequently. The days are longer, the weather's warmer, making our streets busier than ever. Please obey our stop signs, our traffic lights, and our speed limits. Put your phone away while driving. Your neighbors will appreciate it, and your attention makes a real difference in keeping our community safe. On another note, I have been working on the State of the City Address, which I'll first present to the Chamber of Commerce later this month, and I'm looking forward to sharing it at some community events, and will also be recording a video version for everyone to view at their convenience. And finally, a big thank you to Chrisman and to our Easely City Youth Advisory Board. It's new. Members for helping launch our internship and our job shadow program with Easely High School students this month. We actually have our first intern here, Sammy Erhardt. It's been a long dream of mine. Sammy, stand up. Stand up. This is Sammy. It has been a long dream of mine to involve the youth in our city, to give them an investment and to give them a sense of purpose and that they belong in our city, and a firsthand view of how the city operates. I think that's good. So, wishing everybody a safe, fun, and connected summer in Easely. Okay, do we have any updates on city activity?
Yes, ma'am. Saturday is Flag Day. Everyone should, just encourage everyone to fly their flag this week, Saturday especially. And we bought flags last year to hang downtown, and we'll be putting up those tomorrow, the rest of the week, as long as the weather upholds, and we'll keep them up through the Fourth of July, but just want to encourage everyone to fly their flags. And then Chrisman has an update on the Fourth of July activities.
Before I say the Fourth, excuse me, my voice, just a reminder, Farmer's Market is every Saturday, out in front of City Hall from nine to twelve. Our Fourth of July event is happening on July third and fourth this year. We have music going both days, starting at four o'clock. We have craft vendors, food trucks. We actually do have real caramel rides again this year, all free to the public, so we'd love for you to come out. Fireworks will be happening on the Fourth. Our large entertainer this year is Tyler Farr. He's a country singer, so he will sing, and fireworks will go off about nine forty-five. That's all in Old Market Square.
Thank you, Chrisman.
That's all, ma'am.
That's all of the updates. We have no community announcements, so next we have citizens wishing to address city council. This will be a three-minute limit, and I'll remind you that it's, we can't converse, so you can make a statement, or you can ask a question. I would encourage you, if you have questions, to email your representatives, those, those addresses and phone numbers and everything that's applicable to whatever department you're looking for is on our city website. So, do we have citizens sign up? Okay. Mike Johnson.
This is my first time ever being here, been living here all my life. Now, I'm on a, I live on a dead-end street over there on Gilley Avenue. They got a sign, they had a sign up there, used to be a sign, used to be a dead-end. I mean, that's simple, but that, that other sign they put up there, people just don't see it. They just go right by it. And then some of them, I'm down on the end now, and they come down there and they turn around, and sometime they turn around in the front yard, tired up, and they keep on going. But I'd like to see if you could do something about maybe moving the sign down a little bit further, where it'd be right up that street, Francis Street, that turns off of Gilley Avenue. So, it'd do a turn. And then another sign that's pond dollars, that when it built in four, five, six, new houses down there, it becomes, fills up, it's kind of nasty. So, it's clean right now, but it's been nasty, but it, birds, mosquitoes, frogs at night, if you ever frogs, it died a lot of times. You think you're living in the country, but you're living in the city limits. But I'd like to, I'd like to address that, see if you could do anything for it.
Do we have that straight on his sign up? Steve Crowder.
My story starts in two thousand and three, with the Presbyterian home. When they come in, clear cut, clear all the land off behind our neighborhood, had several storms, storms, they put, they put our whole neighborhood in flood zone, bad flood zone. It cost me thousands of dollars. I just remodeled my house, done a lot of landscape, it all got tore up, pieces washed. I showed Tommy the pictures, he said I need to get Mary out. The other day, I was in the backyard, I was, so what's these drones flying over my house for? They were surveying that property. The last, that administration, the whole promises, they put a berm in, they put, they put the retention pond in the wrong spot. A lot of government organizations got in there, so they stopped building. They have not built nothing in that, behind us since two thousand and three. So, a surveyor was back there the other day, I was talking to him, they were planning to add on in the, in, behind there now. And no matter what they add on, it's still going to bring a lot of stormwater down, because even with all the stuff I've done, planted trees, done everything, put the berms in, still give water on both sides once cleared. Houses on either side of me, you've got sump cars. Lucky I'm high enough where I don't get no sump cars. And no matter what they do, it's going to impact our neighborhood. I worked too hard for what I've got. I could have sued the last time. I talked to a larger friend of mine, I'm not going to have it this time. I'm not going to be put in flood zone, and the neighbors tore up. Our neighbor across from me was under a half a foot of mud. And I, I need to talk to Mary out, I don't know what the plans are they got on behind there. But they are surveying it with the drones and everything else, but they come, we, I thought we had a written agreement, when Bagwell was here and everything, that they were not, because they have not touched that in, in twenty-three years. Now, all of a sudden, here they are, with your drones and the survey crews and everything else. But that pond is not in the right spot to catch anything. That's why I agree with her about these impact fees. These idiots come in here, they don't care about nothing except profits. When they clear cut the land and everything else, they don't, they don't think about the neighbors and everything else. And I appreciate the time, that's all I got to say.
Chris Clark.
On a very happy, positive note, I want to say a special thank you to the city of Easely and the recreation department for the American Legion playing ball. They had opening night last Wednesday night. It was a lovely night to be at the ballpark. If any of you have time, check out their schedule. I will be posting it on my Facebook page. I am sure that Gary and his people at American Legion will be posting on theirs. The veterans are very special people to me. I had an uncle who died jumping out of a plane on D-Day, so, eighty-one years ago. So, I value the people who serve our country, and I value more the people who want to raise good men and women that go to boys state, girls state, that are able to play ball without scholarships, because they are the people who cannot afford the travel ball. I am thankful that our city supports it, and I hear a huge thank you for the scoreboard too. So, thank you.
Whitney Hughes.
Hello, thank you for having me. I live in this neighborhood that apparently is affected by the floodwater from the Presbyterian place or whatever, but my issue is different. That neighborhood does not have an HOA. However, my neighbor continuously calls the city building and zoning code department. They are constantly monitoring my property. For instance, the last time I got a citation in my mailbox, it was because of wood, which I had torn down, a small section of my fence. It was all in all, less than forty feet of fencing that I tore down from both the front sides of my house. It was a project that I completed on Easter Sunday, and I believe that irritated my neighbors for other reasons. However, my children go with their father, and I have the weekend free, so that's when I got my work done. And I got a citation that week in my mailbox with photographs taken of my home on Monday morning at eleven AM. The dump actually was also still closed, because it was closed from the Easter weekend. It was closed on Friday, the whole weekend through, closed till Monday. I just do not understand why I am under such scrutiny. We do not have an HOA in my neighborhood, and I don't think I deserve to be overly policed, especially when, if you were to evaluate the entire neighborhood, there are homes, these are friends of mine, so I don't want them to be policed the same way I am as well, but there are things like mattresses deteriorating for well over months. I have photographs of them lasting for enormous amounts of time. There is a basketball goal that used to be on the ground, that's been laying on the side of the ground for well over a year. This was, Easter weekend was the second time I've received citations. The first time was over toys. And I've been told things like I have to move every single thing to the back, and basically that none of my toys were allowed to be visible at all from the street, even though I have a regular-sized driveway, and I park one vehicle in it, and other people have boats and RVs and all kinds of stuff, and I just have a couple bikes and some kids' toys. And I just think this is really unfair, and I don't understand why, but it is all because my neighbor just continuously calls. But the fact that I took a fence down on Easter Sunday, and they were taking photographs of my home on Monday at eleven AM, I'm not sure why, because there was mention also of goats and chickens that are not allowed in the city, and I can tell you, I've been doing deliveries for well over a year, and I can show you where there are goats and where there are chickens. And I have the phone number of a Shannon deck who is worried about a rooster that is crowing all hours of the day and night, right beside her home, and I just do not understand why those issues, why in the world, my home, my toys, a few little things, or a project less than twenty-four hours after I completed it, was being policed to the point that I need to be the focus of such scrutiny in a city that has plenty of work to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Borian. Jenny McJuckin.
Just a couple more things. I did forget to mention, the next public hearing on the budget is going to be on June twentieth at eight thirty AM in the morning, followed by a council meeting where you guys are going to vote. I strongly object to an eight thirty AM council meeting where you all are going to vote on something as important as the budget. Many people are at work and can't attend, and it, it doesn't make what you're doing very visible, and it's not a good look. I think it should be an evening meeting where more people are able to attend. I understand you stream them, but that's not the same thing as when you're voting, that you have to look at us. I think it's important that you have to look at the people that you're voting to represent. And this month, I want to give my kudos to Chrisman. And this month, I want to give my kudos to Chrisman and the Rec Department. They have done a fabulous job. We live near Higgin Park, and we have been very blessed with the upgrades down in the park, even if my kids have gotten really adventurous, but we won't go into that. It's really, really wonderful to see the park that I grew up playing in, fixed up, and so that my kids, really, I guess technically, they're the third generation in my family to play in that park. And I really appreciate your hard work, Chrisman, and all your department.
Okay. We will move on to our unfinished business for tonight. We have a second reading on Ordinance 2025-05 to extend a moratorium to temporarily suspend the acceptance of, review of, and/or action upon applications for zoning approvals, development, construction permits, and other actions for six months.
I make a motion to approve this ordinance for the moratorium extension.
I'd like to make a motion to amend. I'll second your motion and make my motion.
And I'll second his motion.
Do you want to explain? The motion to amend should happen first?
They, they put it fast forward there for us. We have a motion of first and second.
To?
To approve moratorium extension.
Okay.
And now, Mr. O'Shields wants to make a motion. We're open up the floor for discussion.
Okay.
And Mr. O'Shields, I believe, has a motion to amend.
Okay, Mr. O'Shields?
Doing things properly is rather difficult, isn't it? Here we go. I'd like to make a motion to amend Ordinance 2025 to provide an exemption to the moratorium as follows. The moratorium shall not apply to the development of the division of land on property that is less than one acre, and a single lot that can be divided into no more than two lots, subject to the city's current requirements of its zoning ordinance and land development regulations. Under this exemption, the division of land can only occur once.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Okay, we'll move that to the floor for discussion.
I do have one question. Does this mean that there are two different exemptions, or that there's one exemption with two conditions?
Mr. Hughes, answer that for him, would you?
So, yes, there's two, two exceptions. So you can have a division of land on property less than one acre, and you can also have a single lot that is more than one acre, that can be divided into no more than two lots. So you can have a two-acre lot that's divided into no more than two parts.
Just for clarity, then, should that, after then, one acre, should that "and" be an "or"?
No, it's, it, it's, it can, well, I mean, I imagine it would be hard to find one lot that does, but it's going to be fine to say "and," because it's two different exceptions that we are.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, so we're going to vote on the amendment, and all in favor of amending this, raise your hand. All against? Okay. And now we're going to move back to approve or to discuss, is there any discussion on the first motion, which is to approve this? And we have a second, so is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of this motion to amend 2025-05 to provide the exception to the moratorium as follows, which will extend the moratorium to suspend the acceptance of, review of, and/or action upon, applications for zoning approvals, development, construction permits, and other actions, with the exception of, as mentioned by Mr. O'Shields, the division of land for under, less than one acre, for six months. All in favor? Raise your hand. All opposed? Okay, it's passed. We have no new business, and no new resolution, no new resolutions, excuse me. Is there a motion to adjourn to our meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourn? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.